For the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. We, first item on the agenda is an acceptance of a donation. The Board of Education will accept a donation from Spattico Funeral Home in the amount of $924 to be used for educational materials for the Masick Drunk Busters Pedal Kart.
Spatticino.
Oh, Spatticino, sorry, thank you. What is that, what was this pedal cart?
You know, I'm not cer- not sure. Do you know, Joe, what that cart is?
I believe it's a, I know it's a, it's a drunk-driving simulator with goggles, and I'm not sure of the exact color.
Okay, all right. And they're not here this evening, I take it, to do the donation. All right, so, all righty. We will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, David, I have a second. Thanks, Christine. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Masick?
Hi, so Masick Robotics did well at Worlds in Kentucky at the end of April. Three teams attended, and 4478V made it to the elimination rounds for the second year in a row, and also made it to quarterfinals. AP students have a busy week ahead of them, as AP testing will be going on this week and the next. AP Gov was today, and Spanish and physics are tomorrow, so wish Molly and I luck. And as the end of the year approaches, we'll be having the senior trip to Six Flags and the senior banquet at the end of May, and prom will be next Friday at the Water View. So we are all really looking forward to these events.
The fifth annual Advent G Fest was held this last weekend, and both myself and the community were really impressed by all the talent we have. And then my friends and I, when walking around, got featured on Mr. Swartz's Twitter, which is infamous at Masick. This week is dedicated to appreciating our teachers, and I personally can't wait to email my favorite teachers that have helped me throughout the years, as Mr. Greenwood mentioned in this weekend's Masick Minute. And then I have a quick, well, kind of a long sports update. Girls Across, which Molly and I are a part of, but she's not here. We had a 15-3 win over Shaughnessy this Saturday, which qualified us for the state tournament, so now our record is 7-4. Boys Across has a record of 8-3. Softball unfortunately lost this past weekend. Mr. Cobbs and I were both there. They lost to St. Joe's 2-0 in the sixth inning, which was, which it ends in the seventh, so it was, it was a tough loss for the team, but they had their previous win streak of 41, which is really impressive. And then baseball has a record of 11-4, three of their losses being non-leading matchups, which is pretty impressive, so they're placed high in the conference. And then Girls Tennis just celebrated their three senior captains tonight, one of them being Michelle, their senior night.
Very nice.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other reports this evening? All right, we will move on to public participation. All right, all right, before we move on to the superintendent's report, we want to make a change in the agenda to move up item number 9A, and make that now 7A, and then move everybody down one number, and that is the Student Transportation of America purchase of All-Star Transportation, because we have representatives from both companies here, so we'd like to have them do their presentation now, and then just move everybody down one. Do I have a motion to do that? Thank you, Jerry, thank you, David. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you so much. So we will move into that discussion and presentation.
Great. John, if the three of you want to come right up and have a seat there, so we can talk with you. Just as they're getting seated, a little background for the board. John DeFore, you might remember from past visits, is the owner of All-Star, and he gave me a call a couple weeks ago to say that they're being purchased by Student Transportation of America, and so I asked that he come and talk with us, so we can have all the information about how that's going to work.
Thank you, Jack. I'm one of the owners. I also own it with my sister, Leslie Sheldon, and my brother, Richard, who's not here tonight, and this is Greg Stenton, he's from STA, Student Transportation of America. We are your bus contractor. We've been your bus contractor for seven years now. We're in the second year of a new five-year contract that we've been with. We've had a great relationship with Monroe, as well as our other towns. We operate 41 towns in the state of Connecticut. We run about 900 school buses every day. My sister and I have been doing this all our lives. We've been doing it for 42 years. And we're going to continue to do it. STA approached us back in December about possibly considering an acquisition. It's a little early for us, we still want to continue to work and do it, but they made us a really good offer to not only sell our business, but stay working, stay running our company, and doing what we do every day that we still enjoy doing. So it worked for all of us to make that happen. They are a really good company. We think we're the best that there is, and we always think that. We work really hard at what we do. These guys are, they're a large, large company. They run 14,000 buses throughout the United States. They run 600 buses here in Connecticut now, in eight different communities around us, so they're not new to Connecticut, they're certainly not new to school bus transportation. Their founder has been doing this for longer than I've been doing it. I've known those people for a long time. They basically run buses the same way we run buses, and they buy companies, only companies where ownership will stay and be a part of the team and the family of STA Company. So we're kind of excited about it. We're looking forward to it. It's a new chapter for us to do. Our employees are all aware of it, our customers are all aware of it. We've gone to every customer, we've offered to come talk to the boards. Some of our contracts have clauses in them that we need to have an assignment thing done if the company is sold. Your contract does not call for that. Your contract calls for, only if we're going to sign the contract. We are not assigning the contract. All-Star Transportation is still going to exist. We're going to become a wholly-owned subsidiary of STA, so the company is still the same. I'm still going to remain as president of the company. I'm the guy who signed your contract, I'm responsible for your contract, I'll make sure that your contract gets done the way that it gets done today.
So in the day-to-day, John, would the district see any difference?
See none whatsoever. Mike, who you guys know well as our manager here, has been for the whole seven years, stays the same. Bus drivers stay the same, equipment, location, absolutely everything stays the same. It's an ownership change. If we didn't tell you about it, you'd probably never know it. But you're our customers, and we have to tell you about it.
Any questions from the board?
No, it doesn't seem like there's any contractual issues, right?
Right.
Alan, did you have something?
No.
Okay.
Sounds like everything's going to be the same, right?
It is.
Great. Anybody else? I think we're all good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time.
Thanks for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for leaving us out, too.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Unfortunately, we live on the other end of the city.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
All right, we will now move back to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. So first of all, we have some awards to share, some good news. First one was an award that came from the GreatSchools.org, and this is for Masick High School, and this is an award that was given to 1,713 nationally, high schools nationally, and it's given for measuring or ensuring college readiness. And Great Schools, we did a little bit of research on them, because we see a number of these things come through, and we're not, sometimes we're a little cynical, just to find out, you know, is it a crafty way to get business for something? But as we did some research, Great Schools is a not-for-profit that informs parents about quality schools, so it was a nice statement about Masick's work daily with students. And then the second one we have for Masick High School is from U.S. News and World Reports, and you might recall seeing this one each year. This one's based primarily on AP rankings, but not exclusively, and Masick ranked in the top 33 of high schools in the state of Connecticut, which put us in the top 14% in the state, and we were in the top 8% nationally. And the way that schools are chosen for this award are college readiness, math and reading proficiencies, underserved student performance, that is, performance for minority and low-income students, college curriculum breadth, and graduation rate. So this is really a great statement about the quality of instruction that's going on at Masick, and perennially, we see great ratings for Masick High School from U.S. News and World Report for the work that's going on there.
Jack, is that, I'm sorry, does that, private schools as well are factored into that?
I did see magnets in there and charters. No privates, Jake? Yeah, so it's all publics? Okay.
But there are charters.
Right, charters and amendments.
They're just pulled up the list.
Yeah, and I think in the Week in Review, I shared a link with you, with all of you too, so if you want to take a look at who's on there, you can see everybody ranked. And then thirdly, for awards, tomorrow is when we have the visitation for Jackie Hollow. The Connecticut Association of Schools is coming to visit Jackie Hollow as they look at two finalist schools. It's our middle school and one other, as they choose the middle school of the year for the Connecticut Association of Schools. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that that will go our way tomorrow.
What's the criteria for that?
Criteria for that, I looked on their website, and I've got to think back for a minute. I know that they're going to come and literally speak with the administrative team, they're going to ask questions of us, they're going to ask questions of teachers. I believe they're also going to meet with students and ask questions of them. I can't give you details beyond that. I'd have to look back on the site to see specifically, but I will keep you posted on how that goes, and definitely get you some more information on that as well. And then the annual Board of Education retiree recognition is coming up, and that will be on June 3. And the way that this works is we'll have a reception at 7:00 PM in the Masick Library Media Center, right over on that side towards the circulation desk, and then followed by that, we'll recognize our retirees at the Board of Ed meeting at 7:30. And that's a great time for us to recognize people who have given a lot of time and service to this district. And then an update on our insurance. We are all signed off with the state partnership health insurance plan, all of our unions have signed on. The original projection for the increase this year to next year, to project what our actual costs would be, was 8% provided by Brown &amp; Brown. We just received the official increase for next year, and it was 8.1%. So the difference was roughly $11,000, which we can absorb within our insurance costs, so that was a fairly accurate, fairly accurate guess on the part of Brown &amp; Brown as we look into next year. Related to that, we had a meeting at Town Hall. Donna was a part of it, Joe and I were there, along with Ken Kellogg, Mike Manjos, Chair of Board of Finance, Ron Bonofsky, the town's finance director, and we took a look at our insurance. Our claims continue to grow, and they are, they are outpacing funding at this point. So part of what we talked about with the Board of Finance is they do have a contingency, and it is something that we are going to have to tap into to keep the health insurance solvent. So that is a large part of what we discussed on Friday, and then moving forward, we're going to work closely with Mike and the Board of Finance to be able to put that contingency into effect, so we can keep the insurance in a good place. And then the proposed Board of Ed professional development budget. At this point, we have all of our guest presenters confirmed. It is very early, so if we want to move things around, as I talked with each one of them, they were willing to make changes if we wanted to. And we had talked at the last meeting of coming back to this schedule to take a look at it and consider any additions, changes, or deletions, and just wanted to see what the board thought, if there were any things we wanted to change there.
Jack, I looked at it, as long as our focus is budget, special ed, things that we've talked about that are our priorities right now, I think those are the important things for us to learn about, so we can understand the process and move forward. So any of that juggling that you can do to bring that up, like in our next meeting, that'd be great.
You got it.
Yeah, and special education, just so that you know, Jack and I met with Kay and Darlene last Thursday to go through presentations at the board meetings, and we're going to kind of do like a chronological thing that we kind of talked about, where we're going to start at the beginning, and go back and explain everything step by step.
That's good.
Like, what's an IEP? What does it look like? Why is it done? How does it build out and kind of build on it every time we meet with them to kind of understand, you know, because if you don't have a child who special needs, you wouldn't know, like, the process. But this way, we're going to learn it from the ground up, so that we fully understand exactly how each portion and everything is done, and how that works.
Kind of backs up our new member orientation process, too.
Well, and we talked about that, too, so to go hands-in-hand with that, while we're going through it, we're going to do something so that that then becomes part of the new orientation package, so that, you know, it's right there and readily available.
That's great. Good.
All right, so for the 20th, the focus will be IEPs.
Right.
And how students are identified.
Identified.
So that way, as Donna said, we can build from there. We can take a look at other aspects related to programming and costs. Okay? All right, so we'll put the PD into, into the full planning mode. And then regarding the elementary class size update, just wanted to walk you through that, and actually, if you give me a moment, I can even call that up on the screen, so we can see that on the large screen as well as on your screen.
You want me to move, Jack?
Sure, if you would, Donna. So we've been putting this in the Week in Review each week, just so you can see changes over time. And right now, where we are, the two places we're watching closely, our first one is Monroe L., grade three. We're still holding at 48, so we've got two sections of 24. 25 tends to be the spot where we really start to become a little concerned, so we've got room for a couple students. We're hoping that remains where it is. And then the other place that we're watching closely is at Stepney L. And if you remember, this was a challenge for us last year. When we got into the springtime, we added some sections in some other places, but kindergarten last year was in the high teens in the spring, and we picked up a number of students over the summer, and then our kindergarten class sizes ended up being 22. We had three. I've shared with parents in PTO meetings, and I think I've shared it here, too, once we get beyond student placement, we don't like to make changes, because the problem is, if you've got everybody all set with, this is my teacher for the coming year, and you tear that all apart, it really, it's not a good scenario for everybody involved. So with this, we're going to watch it very carefully as we get into the late spring here. This is right now, because we had 22 here in K, we move into grade one. Now we have three sections of 23, and at first grade, that, that size is a concern. So that's a place we're watching closely. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I did send letters to 12 families that live on the border of Monroe L. and Stepney L. There are 12 Stepney L. families that live close to Monroe L. And as of today, Terry called the families that hadn't responded. We have 11 noes, and one that didn't respond, who she's trying to get in touch with. So that did not produce anything for us, but it was worth the try to see if any families would be willing to move over, because the first grade sizes at Monroe L. are very favorable. So that would have helped us better, unfortunately, didn't go our way. All right, so to be continued, we'll continue to watch this and bring it back to the board, so that you're informed about where we are.
What's the plan if that goes over 23?
One of the things that we're looking at is, you might recall from the last board meeting, we were talking about the ASO position and SRO, and I continue to be in contact with John Salvatore. If the SRO position comes back to us, and SRO is deployed overseas for military duty, if that position comes back to us as an SRO in district, we can eliminate one ASO position, and then the savings from that could be applied towards this. It's almost an equal wash by doing that, so that's one option we have, and we're still trying to find if there's some other options we might have to, to be able to add a position here.
That just covers the one, though.
Just covers the one, right, and that's where we're going to watch this closely. We might, you know, we might luck out with the Monroe L., where we don't pick up any students, or who knows? We might even luck out where somebody chooses to withdraw. That could happen, too. Less likely, but it could occur. So at this point, what I was going to propose to all of you is that for the next couple meetings, I continue to bring this back, and we watch the numbers closely, and consider what options we have. The next item I have for you is the walkthrough at Masick in alternative ed. Back when we discussed this, the board wanted to do this on Fridays, and we're really starting to become limited with the available Fridays. May 24th, we have Specta Gala, which is okay. There'll be more activities going in the library for us to see as we walk through classrooms, but the other thing on that day that we have to be aware of is that's also the day that we have the visit to CES, to see their programs. We have three board members and myself going. So if we did it on that date, we would have to make the walkthrough later in the day. It couldn't be a morning visit, so that's something we have to consider. And then June 7th is another Friday, but it's an unrealistic option, because we'd be, yeah, we'd be in the final exam schedule at that point.
Right.
I mean, the other option, too, is we could look at other days in the week, but I don't know what the board would prefer to do.
Yeah, I would say neither one of those dates are realistic to do.
Okay. Do we want to look at other days in the week, or do you want to wait till the fall?
I'd wait till the fall.
Yeah.
I don't think we had a lot of turnout when it was during the week, right? There wasn't a lot.
There was, uh...
That's why I'm thinking just for Friday, because there were more of us that could do it.
I think there was like three or four of us, I want to say.
So, I'd say just push it out till the fall.
Yeah, I think at this point, let's push it.
Okay. So Dr. Greenwood, if you could start to think about maybe some fall dates, and share with me? Thank you, sir. All right, and next is with specialized education updates. I sent the board an email today, just to clarify timeline with this. So the 20th, our next board meeting, will have a special education presentation that will be on the IEPs and student identification for special education services. Then beginning June, the first meeting of each month will be a special education update. So I'm going to cover that one tonight. And our three standing items for that are a financial update, and regarding the financial side of special ed, not significant change since our last meeting. Some small things, but nothing major of note. Regarding any new students or new programs, we don't have anything since the last meeting. One of the things that Kay and Darlene are going to do for the June meeting is we do our annual reviews, which are meetings that occur each year to review the IEP, each child's IEP, see what is in the IEP, what changes need to be made in terms of additional services or reduced services. And so when we have them come, the beginning of June, most of those annual reviews, not all, most of them will be complete, so what they'll be talking to you about is, how do we look in terms of programming for all of our students when they come and report in June? So that report in June will have much more information in that regard. Regarding efficiencies, we continue to talk with Ed Advance, and Ed Advance is getting closer to having conversations about our facility. So I anticipate that, you know, we'll hear more about that in the coming weeks and months, but Joe and I just talked with Jeff Kitching last week, the head of Ed Advance, and they have a front-runner facility, and my hopes is that it will be one very close to us. So that's, that's getting closer to being something that we can actually act upon. And that's what we have at, at this point on efficiencies, more to come on that. And then regarding 2018-19 budget, what I wanted to do is also show you the spreadsheet on the screen, so we could talk that through, and everybody can see it in large format. So what we did is take the feedback from the board from our last meeting in terms of column headings, and Donna and I had a chance to look at these, but also Linda's worked very, very hard on this, and we've added those up top. I've gotten a couple other suggestions from board members, too, since we last met, and one of the things that I was planning on doing, and wanted to see if you're comfortable with this, is during each meeting, we'll have a tab for each meeting. So our next, this was a year-to-date, and the date is always going to be a little bit behind where we are, just because of the way, you know, having the information, the access to the information. So for our next meeting, we'll have the next date down here as a tab, so that we can all see, okay, what are the changes over time? Keeping these lines consistent, so as you get to the next date, you can see, okay, what's the difference in line 75110, this instance versus the last? The other thing Jessica and I were talking about, too, is she, she wanted to see rank order. So the other thing we could do very easily is we could have a year-to-date 43019 with all the account numbers listed out, so you can see change over time, and then another tab, year-to-date 43019 sort. And then that one would have, you know, high to low in terms of, okay, what are the largest cost centers, or the largest change areas, down to the lowest change, and then keeping this chronology for both as we move forward. So what are your, what are your thoughts in terms of format?
I think you need to go back so that they can see the beginning of it.
Over on that side of it, Donna?
Yeah.
Yep.
So what we changed, so what they, what was changed is, so budget is where you started with the budget, and then we, then you had some transfers, and then we got to our revised budget, so we're, so the, excuse me, the budgeted number and the revised budget number is going to be the same at the end. It was just a couple of transfers that occurred. Year-to-date expended is what is actually in Munis' system right now, and that ties to obviously our financials. The incumbences are what is either purchase orders that are pulled, or incumbences that we know that we have put in there for things like, you know, electricity. Well, we don't know what the exact number is, but there are estimates in there on how much that's going to be over the next couple of months, and then you'll have the total year-to-date expended right now, plus the incumbences give you what the actual total is, that we're projecting for year ends as a year-end number. Then you're going to have the variance to budget, and this is where it gets a little, a little, I'll call it a little funky to the accountant person in me. The way Munis does it would be the opposite of where, what I would do in a financial report. The negative numbers are you've overspent the budget, the positive numbers are you've underspent the budget. The accountant in me says that should be completely flipped around, but the problem is that this is not a report that is, that's a formula. This is a report that actually gets dumped and dumped loaded in from Munis. If we try to massage that and try to change it around, the integrity of the actual report is going to, is going to be called into question, because it's no longer a data jump, data, data dump. We're now manipulating the numbers. And this is, I guess, the way the town also sees it, too, on their side. So after talking this through with Linda and Jack, we've decided to just leave it this way. So the $114,000 in school psychologist is that we overspent in school psychologist by $114,000, we actually underspent it. So then when you see percentage of over and under, well, that actually works correct. So you kind of need to look at it side by side with the variance, and then the percentage, because the percentage does do it the right way, and why Munis does it the opposite of normal accounting, I can't tell you. And then you have what we have, what the projected end-of-year variance is going to, variance is going to be, and then they obviously have notes as to why, and they're putting in notes as to why a line item is either over or under what the budget actually is.
So you're proposing having the tabs as an ongoing, so if something does change, we can see it in real time?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
You know, that way you've got the one-to-one through the whole year.
So we add a specialized student for something during the year.
You can see, okay, Jack, last week, last week this was in black, this week it's in the red. Why is that?
Right. And that way, because what will end up happening is, what's going to change is the incumbences. There's open POs. There may be an open PO that the person didn't actually, they opened the PO, they never purchased the item, so that actually will get, ends up getting closed, and that money coming back, because they never used it. So that is what Linda's working very diligently on right now, trying to get all those open purchase orders actually closed, to either getting an actual invoice and bill, or if they didn't use it, closing it out and getting rid of it, and saying, okay, well, that money comes back to the account, because they never actually spent it. So that way, that's really what's going to change, and that way, by doing different tabs, we'll see those occurrences happening, because, you know, electricity, we could have budgeted $100,000 in May, and because of whatever, it's only $90,000, or it may be $110,000, so then we'll be able to see what's actually going on, and we'll see that on an ongoing basis.
So it's two months left in the fiscal year, right? And we get this column here, L. projected end-of-year variance.
Yep.
Is that actually the projected end-of-year variance, or is that the current variance up until year-to-date?
We are projecting where we're going to be at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the accrual for the, for the last two months of the year.
Well, that's the variance to what the year-to-date actuals are, plus the incumbences.
So whatever's left on the books to pay over the next two months, plus what we've paid so far.
Correct. So some of that could be, like, if you go back, if you go back, there may be a category where you have nothing in incumbents, and you've already over or underspent that specific account. So what they did was, and I don't even know if they have one, can you go back, Jack, and go into where the incumbences are?
Yep.
And move over? So like, let's say furniture and fixtures, there is no incumbence remaining. So the 517850 is what was spent for the year.
We've paid, yeah.
So we overspent that by a little under $2,000.
But we're not going to incur any more expenses against that line item?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And I sent an email to all the administrators today saying, please, close out POs. There's spots, you know, we've got spots where like we don't have enough toner. You know, we're going to have some of those spots, and we've got the copying machines to use. But at this point, we've got to really close out POs to know where we are. Because we want this number to stop moving on the bottom, so we can get to an accurate closeout for the year. Right now, from the time Linda and I have spent together, that's the number we come up with. Now, if you think about the spreadsheets that I gave you on the special ed piece, it was 904. Gabby's estimate on the freeze was 300. Those two things kind of tie together. So that's where we believe we are right now. Again, we have the incumbences to get, get through. There are some expenditures that still need to occur, things like graduation, and we're going to have some special ed things, those kinds of things to the end of the year. But we're going to stay on this to keep that number dialed in as tight as we can. Now, related to that, the other tab that I've given you down here is called contingency. And this also relates to Friday's meeting with, with everybody at the town. And so we talked through how we're going to use contingency to make up for the shortfall. So here's that 651 we just saw, the variance for, from April 30. Contingency funds available right now, $684,000. Where's that coming from? The Capital Reserve, 226. I just talked with Ron about that today. That still leaves alone $80,000 for the turf field that we had talked about, having those funds available for future years. The security grant is 275. The way that that's worked out is there's two missing invoices right now. The state will only pay this if they get the physical invoice. And there are two invoices that we don't have a paper copy. We've asked the vendors for them. One is from Fletcher Thompson, an architectural firm, for $5,500. The firm has shrunken drastically over time. And they asked that we actually pay for the invoice, which we're not going to do. Then another group, AST, they do a lot of our security work or had. There was a $20,000 invoice we're trying to get from them. We've been trying for weeks. I spoke with the state about it. They're trying to get it from them too. Finally, Mr. Scoville from the state grant office said to me, Jack, let's stop waiting for this. I'll allow you to submit on that for another grant for next year and still get that. And we can still get you a check for $275,000 by Monday or Tuesday next week. So we're going to move ahead with getting that amount, and then we'll submit for that $20,000 in next year's grant. That seemed to be the most prudent thing to do at the time. Special revenue funds, we have available, $183,000. That's where the special revenue is coming from. These are income accounts. We do make a little bit of money through preschool over the years. We generally carry it over. Reel is a program we no longer have, but there was some carryover funds there. We do make some money from special ed tuition. There is some income. If we have a foster child who's with us in our town, we will be paid tuition for the child to be here. So that's where we get some income from that. Daycare program, we do have a little bit of income there, and then donations. So that's where all that comes from. That's all that fits together. And then what I'll continue to do with this sheet as we move forward is update these tabs so we can see where we are related to available funds and our expenses. Any questions or changes you'd like to see?
I think this will help a lot, the month-to-month. We can share this with Board of Finance.
This is a public.
And it's in their same format.
Public link, yep, can be shared with anybody. Yeah, Jerry?
Jack, am I reading it right? So, you know, God forbid the numbers go up. So we have still $33,000 to play with?
Mm-hmm.
Question, that's not called play with.
I didn't mean it to all. What I'm thinking of, God forbid, there's an expense we just haven't thought of. You know, we just bought a graduation, but it could be anything. It could be something small to huge, and that jumps up to a 700 instead of 651. Then what do we do? I guess that was my point, that I wasn't trying to ask at our last now. What happens if we go over the $33,000?
If we go over, it would have to be a special appropriation. That's the ugly truth of it. So the thing that we've got to do internally is, where are we going to control the expenditures where we have discretion? And then the other thing we've got to continue to do is dial in in terms of the income. Are there any other places that we have available also?
Is there a policy in place for the POs that haven't been signed yet? Or is there a date attached to them, so that moving forward, you know, teachers have to submit by whatever X dates? Just so we have a little bit of wiggle?
Yeah, the POs that we're signing off on at this point are the must-haves. It's things like buses for athletics, it's, you know, the things that we have to have in order to function moving forward. If it's discretionary, then it's not something we're doing.
You mean including open POs, like remaining dollar amounts on open POs?
That was my email today, is to say, please, close out POs. And then, but Linda's going to start to do is look at each one of those, okay, where are we, follow up with individuals? Okay, this one.
Are you spending it or not?
Right, and is it, is this essential or not?
Right.
And then if it's not, okay, it's money to the good. What other questions? Okay, let me share a couple other pieces. So tomorrow night, we have an interview with interim business director. And we'll keep the board posted on how that goes, and whether or not this individual's the right person for us. And then the other thing that I put together too, is information for the board, just for your consideration, is if we were to go that route, and if we were to hire an interim business director for the balance of the year, what would that cost? So we put together, based on the business director's current salary, what would it cost per day? And then what would the total be for the duration of the year? If we had the person for 37 days, that's Wednesday of this week through to the end of June, minus Memorial Day, because it would be a per diem salary, total cost would be $23,000. So I just share that with you for your consideration, whether or not it's something we want to do.
Is there, so we're taking the current salary that we're, that we're paying, and we're dividing that out to come up with a daily? Is there an averaging state that they're paid, other than going with our salary that we're currently paying the person? Am I making sense with my question?
Are you, are you talking about what he's currently making today?
No.
No, he's a retired person.
Okay, right.
So it's what our finance director's making?
Correct.
So I'm wondering, you know, don't shoot the messenger, is there a way, is there an average? Is there a, you know?
Take less.
Yes, thank you, David. I wasn't trying to say this.
It can be part of the discussion. You know, I'm not sure if we want to do that in public session, but, you know, it can definitely be part of the discussion.
Well, I mean, that's, that's part of the hiring process. And would they, you know, would they come aboard on a per diem salary, you know, as a consultant, however we word that? But I think it's important, especially in our situation, to get a competent individual in and looking at this stuff, and to give us ideas and policies and procedures and suggestions. So we need this to get fixed, so it's money well spent.
I think what I was bringing up in a public session is just that. Is there a consultant average, instead of just what we're offering?
Yeah, although it might be higher.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I was, it was just a, I don't know the answer.
Sure. We could definitely delve into that further and see.
Yeah, like what does Newtown Tremble pay them?
I can tell you, in the dirg, we're about, we're about in the middle of the dirg.
Okay, then that, then that's what I needed to hear.
Yeah, yep.
Then that's fine.
Yep.
What does everybody want to do, I guess, is the question?
I think we move forward with a, an interim. I hate to say, you know, spend more money, but we need, we need this done. This is important. We need a qualified individual in here to look at this and to fix things, and to help Jack get the numbers correct and drilled down as much as possible.
Yes, or in the best shape possible heading into next.
A hundred percent. And then move forward with the, with the new hire.
Right, and then a new hire, everything's already cleaned up.
Correct.
Is confident that everything, you know.
Is as accurate as possible.
And can hit the ground running, so that they're not taking the time, starting brand-new, and then having to fix things and go through things.
We have a responsibility to everybody in the town to get that accurate number. So it's going to cost a little bit to get there.
Yep.
Plus, there is a large report due at the end of June to the state, isn't there?
EFS is a summer report.
Summer report, okay.
Yeah.
And actually Linda is the person who's been doing it for years.
Okay. So are you looking for a motion to move forward? Is that what you're?
Mm-hmm. I would say yes, because that's a decision we need to make, because obviously of the position we're in, we're need, we are going to need to authorize the superintendent to move forth, forwards, excuse me, with whatever decision we decide. If we're doing an intern, then we would need to authorize him to move forth with doing, hiring an intern.
Motion to move forward?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Jeff?
Is there the potential for even consideration for an in-house candidate?
Oh, this is just an interim. This is not hiring a actual.
Even on the interim?
Well, the, the problem is that they're a little overwhelmed, because they would be shorthanded by one. So Linda has done a great job putting some of this stuff together. But for her to, her and the staff that they have to try to do it, I think maybe a little too much with the end of the year.
That if we have someone who's in place that we feel confident in, would it be cost-refered maybe to have them do it and then provide assistance that might be cheaper? In other words, instead of the, you know, someone who's.
No, I understand what you're doing. I would say that we have to see how that plays out, because I don't know what the, I don't know what the, the condition of all the financials are and, and all of that type of stuff. So until we have somebody who's very knowledgeable, who's this retired guy who's done it for, if he's the right person, somebody who's knowledgeable that knows, you know, he's worked with MUNIS, some of the questions he's already asked Jack, you know, are, you know, you could tell he knows his stuff and everything. So until he tells us, we may find things are better than what we think it is. I don't know. And then we can reassess and discuss that. Jack may come back and say, you know what, he's already got things in, in place. I think we may be able to, you know, be forward, but I can't answer that at this point. I don't know if Jack can either, until we know. I think that's the problem, that there's a question mark of not knowing.
The differential between those two scenarios might not be all that much, versus the benefit of having somebody who's done this a lot.
I look at it more from getting someone up to speed, right? Someone who's familiar with what we're doing and what has gone and transpired, versus someone who's going to come in blind essentially, or maybe not blind, but, you know, used to what's going on, but not familiar with.
Sure, yeah, it's a good point. There are certain duties that he's going to come in knowing that our number-two person wouldn't. Because what our number-two person deals with is not the budgeting side as much as the, more of the accounting and day-to-day fund lines. Whereas when he comes in, his skill set is more budget level on down. So even though it's a different district, he's going to come in with some skills that our, our number-two person doesn't have.
And that's not to say the number-two person may not apply when we post for the position, and may not, you know.
Right.
I, I, you know, that's, that's, I think, a little further down the road. I think we want somebody to come in, look at it from a fresh standpoint of having years of experience.
Are we asking him for essentially an audit of our finances?
Well, no, he's kind of, well, in a way, yes. Like, he's going to come in and look at everything and see if, you know, kind of try to make sense of it, go through it, and finds out what kind of has been done.
And this can be done in the time that we have allotted essentially for his?
Well, I mean, one of the things that was a positive sign is coming into the interview, these are public records. He asked for, can I get, I want these touchpoints. I want to see these snapshots financially. So right off the bat, he knows MUNIS, and we gave him snapshots. We anticipate going into the interview tomorrow night, he's going to be talking to us about this is, this is what I see, based on what, the information that I have.
Anything else? All right, all in favor of hiring an intern for, based on what happens at the interview tomorrow? All in favor? Against? Thank you. All right, motion passes.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Jack?
Uh, that is, let's see, yep, that's the last item I have.
All right, perfect, thank you. We will move on. There is no old business, so we will move on to new business. And up, since we've moved the Student Transportation of America, is board volunteers for our teacher negotiations. So do you want to discuss that and give a little overview?
Sure, so we will be starting negotiations this summer. And we need board members to serve as representatives as part of the negotiations team.
All right, so, so what happens is, we will, you know, board members who serve on this will serve with the administrators. The teachers will have their own team. What ends up happening is we have one night where we meet, kind of set the ground rules, and then there'll be an exchange of proposals, and then there'll be further meetings where, you know, you're negotiating the contract out. I think the timeline is what, mid-August to start?
Mm-hmm, I believe it's August 18th, if I remember right.
Yeah. August 18th, so it'll be about that time, and it'll go through the fall. It's not every night of the week. It may be, you know, these five or six nights. And then, you know, it's a very set schedule, because then by, you have only a certain amount of days to actually negotiate yourself, and then you go into something called mediation. And it's a specific time, like if you don't have your agreement in place, it goes to mediation. Well, at the end of mediation, if you don't have the agreement in place, it goes into arbitration. So there's actually set deadlines that the state puts into place that figure to do those and stuff. So I would say, in the past, we've never really kind of limited it. But, but I would say we probably want at least three to serve, wouldn't you think?
Sure.
How many unions are up?
Is it just the teachers?
Oh, okay.
Just the teachers this year. Everybody else is in place for at least another couple of years.
Yeah, we just had a lot of up-to-uno negotiations.
We did.
Yeah, Jerry did a bunch down in Allen, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
So we're all set with them. I think the next one up after the teachers, but that's a year out, would be the administrators.
I believe you're right, yep.
But other than that, yeah, it's just this.
What time are they normally?
Normally evening.
At night, right?
They're usually at night.
The teacher one is like four, four years ago.
Yes, you, well, three years ago.
Three years ago, because I was pregnant with you about doing those. That's how I remember.
Yeah.
They're at night.
Yes, they're at night, usually at night. Yeah.
You said it's like five or six meetings?
It, it really all depends. It could be, you know, it could, right, Murray, when you say it usually runs about five or six, just face-to-face?
Yes.
Yeah. Before you go into the other things, mediation is usually one or two nights. Usually one night, because you only get the mediator one night. And arbitration is one night, because you only get the arbitrator one night usually.
Yeah, that.
We haven't gone to arbitration in many years, but typically that's what it is. I don't even remember the last time we went to that far out, so. So usually it's about five, six meetings, I would say, at the most, and stuff. Anybody?
I don't know if I can, so I'm going to pass.
You can't, sorry, Jerry, you have to abstain from this.
Sounds good to me.
Jack, I may be able to help, I just have to check times and schedule, but...
Okay.
And I'll be on it.
Okay.
Anybody else? Great, thanks.
Great.
All right, so that should be good. If anybody else wants to, just let us know, you know, we can take more. I would say we definitely want at least three.
Great. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else before we move to adjournment? Jerry?
Jack, when are you going to release the rate schedules to the retired teachers for the insurance?
Uh, Joe and I were just going through those today. We found, yeah, we found a couple errors. Joe, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think the rates are just, I confirmed with Adrian, we found some errors with the dental.
Good that you checked it.
Yeah, no, we, we checked it first, and there was some discrepancies between the dental and the medical. It's supposed to be the same rate, and they weren't the same. Adrian went and fixed that, and that, and then there was just a few other small areas under the paraeducators that still needed to be changed. So I'm, I'm waiting for the fourth revised sheet, but it should come soon.
Whenever you guys get it.
Pretty, pretty soon, right?
I mean, we need to have, I mean, I'm hoping to have open enrollment within the next two weeks or so.
That's what I, I just need to get, I know. I need to get that out too, that's the reason why I...
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, hearing nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Jerry, thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes.